Call to order, the Ashland Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting for Thursday, May 9th. And we'll start with our invocation and then Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for our city, Ashland, Kentucky. We thank you for the blessings shown toward us in recent days. We ask and invite your Holy Spirit into our chambers and ask that you preside over our meeting today. We ask for your wisdom and guidance on this Board of Mayor, Commissioners, as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and in the best interests of our people. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and those in attendance today. We pray always, in Jesus' name, amen.
Let's stand and salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. Do we have a motion to receive and file the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to receive and file the minutes for the regular meeting held on April 25th, 2024? Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Commissioners, if you'll let me begin. First off, welcome, everybody. Smaller crowd than we had, but we're always glad to see those in our chambers today. I have been told it is a special day for somebody in the room. Does anybody have a birthday? Oh, there he is. There he is. Well, happy, happy birthday to you, sir. And we're, I know you're excited to have us with you on your birthday here. Oh, yeah, yeah. So we're glad, we're glad to be able to be a part of it and happy birthday. Couple of things, since the last meeting, and we will go over this, but it's been a banner month for our city. We have received accolades across the board and our city won City of the Year from SOAR, which is an honor. You know, that program was put together by Steve Beshear, Governor Steve Beshear, and Congressman Hal Rogers. A bipartisan effort to promote Appalachia. And I think for us to receive that award is symbolic of, of the hard work that our people are putting in to moving our city forward and in the right direction. So to have that recognition received by somebody from the outside looking in at us, it means a lot to this commission. It means a lot to our citizens. So we are grateful to the SOAR Committee and all that were involved in that special day. City Manager, also thank you. I know you couldn't make it, but we appreciate your leadership on a lot of this stuff would happen without you pushing forward. And one of those things that you've been pushing hard on is the quality of our water. And so we also have received the best news one could get about our water system, about our water treatment facility. And I think he'll, he'll go into that a little bit, but it was in today's paper. So we care about the health of our citizens, the quality of the water, the quality of the jobs, the quality of the life. And I think that the money that we're putting out there for projects across the board, all over this city, is indicative of our commitment to all those things. So thank you to the staff. We couldn't do it without you. You know, we get to sit up here and look like we're doing a lot of it, but no, it's you all. You all make the difference and we are so appreciative. Something else that happened this week that I was able to be a part of was the FOP Memorial Service. And it was probably the best, I think, I've ever attended. And I know we had some commissioners there and I think we all felt the same way. So our gratitude to the FOP for the leadership there for putting it together. And you know, it's a tough day for some families, but they did, they did the whole program with much respect and honor and reverence to those folks. One more thing, it is a couple, we actually have three proclamations. I'm going to start with asking Scott Martin to come forward. He is going to tell us who he is and what he does and then I'll, and then I'll read the proclamation.
Well, let me show you something.
Okay, sure. Please.
It's like show and tell, so I figure if I'm going to show, I should, I should show. I'm Scott Martin, the President and CEO of the Northeast Kentucky Chamber of Commerce. Week before last, we rolled out the new branding. I'll turn it so everybody can see it and I'll let you commissioners see it first. And it's, it's, as everyone can see, and if I stand like that, that's probably better. This is a ribbon in, in the shape of the state of Kentucky. And from this northeast area is energy, a burst of energy. And, and that is the new look for our chamber. With that, we also have our new tagline, which is the mission statement and it's forge, connect, grow. It's forging relationships. That's important because we forged steel for 150 years, just right down the road. So as a tip of the hat to our history and a proud history at that, it's forging relationships, connecting our region and growing business. So you'll be seeing a lot of this and I brought two different colors. There's a, there's an absolute color palette with everything we've done. And I have to, I have to mention Madeline Tipton and Tipton Creative. She designed all this and it's.
Where's Madeline from, by the way?
She's from right here in Ashland.
Awesome, okay.
Yeah, so we did everything right here. And as if you drive by the office now, you'll see that on the glass out front. You know where we are, you know who we are. It's not just some building. So there's, there's a lot of great stuff going on in there. We invite you guys, swing by as we also cleaning the place up and making it better. But the branding was rolled out. Madeline Tipton did just an amazing job. Couple of little updates. We did have our Kentucky Waterways Documentary. I think some of you were there, Cheryl was there, yeah? And it was standing room only at the Highlands Museum. We had about 32 RSVPs. We had 60 people. So we are grabbing chairs from anywhere we could. It's a great documentary. It is rolling out on KET, so watch for that. It's awesome. Also, Youth Leadership, which is our, our program for high school juniors, has now selected the class of 2425. So we have 40 high school juniors that will start in, in the program. CLD, our Community Leadership Development, is meeting right now as, as we're here. And that's why we're not there.
Yeah, we want to be there too, yeah.
Business After Hours tonight at the Putnam Building. Paul Castle's Crescent Moon Properties. Live music, great time for everyone. It's from 5 until 8. There's a paranormal investigation team that's going to be there, so who wants to miss that, right? Saturday, we'll be cutting a ribbon at Giovanni's in South Ashland for a grand reopening. And Luncheon Learn, May 28th. I can't, I can't disclose who it is, but you're going to want to mark the date down and we'll have the details next week.
Okay.
And thank you all for always being there.
Well, Scott, we, as you know, support the chamber and, and all of its efforts to promote our small business community. And with that in mind, whereas the City of Ashland, Kentucky recognizes the invaluable contributions of small businesses to our community's economic vitality, cultural diversity, and overall well-being. And whereas small businesses serve as the backbone of our local economy, driving innovation, creating jobs, and fostering a sense of community pride. And whereas the Northeast Kentucky Chamber of Commerce plays a pivotal role in supporting and advocating for the interests of small businesses throughout our region, providing resources, networking opportunities, and guidance to help them thrive. Whereas in recognition of the enduring dedication and resilience exhibited by the small business owners, and I'm one of them, employees and supporters, it is fitting to designate this month as Small Business Appreciation Month in the City of Ashland. So we urge all our residents to join us in expressing our gratitude for the contributions of our small businesses and in supporting them this month and every month. And Scott, you'll come up and we'll proceed this. Commissioners, if you don't mind, we'll get a picture.
We may recognize Scott's name. Scott, your dad had some experience at this building. What's your dad do?
He was US Mayor here in the late eighties, Dick Martin. Yeah, so we've got a community family.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, we appreciate you. Thank you so much. Thanks, Scott. Okay. Do we have our members of our Code Enforcement Office here? Smiling faces. Tough work and we appreciate all you all do. Whereas the City of Ashland, Kentucky is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, that would be you all, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas the guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials, who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas those modern buildings' codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council, to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. Whereas Mission Possible, the theme for Building Safety Month 2024, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. So there, now therefore, I, Matthew Perkins, Mayor of the City of Ashland, do proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month and encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in all those activities. And I think one of the things that we can do to help code is our Repair Fair that's coming up. And it's a great way to give back to our citizens. And I think what you all do year-round to keep us safe, including writing me up, as you have done, even the mayor is not exempt. But I know it's because you're doing your job and you're doing it well and I appreciate that. But if you don't mind, come up, we'll get a picture with you guys.
They're walking out now, so I can say that this week I cleaned my gutters out and my motivation was them. But, and I won't say how I cleaned my gutters out, but they're clean.
And it was safe.
It's safe and they're clean. So thank you, Code Enforcement, for motivating me. Absolutely.
One more proclamation to issue. It's an important one to us and this commission. We've all been affected in positive ways by our teachers. Whereas teachers are the cornerstone of our society, dedicating themselves to educating and shaping the minds of our youth. Whereas the City of Ashland recognizes the invaluable contributions teachers make to our community, nurturing future leaders and innovators. And whereas Teacher Appreciation Week provides an opportunity for us to express our gratitude and admiration for the hard work, dedication, and passion demonstrated by our educators. So I declare this week Teacher Appreciation Week in the City of Ashland. I encourage all our citizens to join me, expressing appreciation and gratitude to the teachers who inspire, motivate, empower students to reach their fullest potential. This one's for you, Mrs. Artis. I know you're probably watching today, but you meant a lot to me through Key Club and public service is part of, the reason I'm doing it is because of Key Club and her leadership. So it's very appreciative of that. All right, enough of my talking. Now we'll get to our commission. Commissioner Spriggs.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you said that because I had it down, marked down here that we should recognize our teachers this week. But I want to recognize a school in particular because the 2024 DAR American Revolution Legacy Grant was given to Pogue Elementary. Pogue Elementary is our, our Pogue chapter school that we, that we helped. So they've got a $5,000 legacy grant, one of 64 given through the country, to take fourth and fifth graders to Frankfurt in the fall. So I thought that was a pretty nice thing to announce today and it was a very big deal. I also want to comment on Scotty's mention of the Waterway film. It was so interesting, of those of you who were there, it was wonderful because I found out there are 157 species of fish in the river. Didn't know that because you always seem to catch catfish. But anyway, how blessed we are to be on this river. It is, we take it for granted, but our water, everything, and it's a beautiful thing to have. However, we are the, the Ohio River is the only one that doesn't get any federal funds for cleanup. So there's a big push on that kind of thing. Okay, I have a couple announcements from Brandy at Visit Ashland and she wanted me to say, May 20th is Burger Week. And so we have 13 restaurants signed up with 17 different burgers. All you burger heads, get out there and you'd go to.
You like a good burger.
And you, I love burgers. I'm a burger fiend. AKY, V A K Y Burger dot com. Go on there and check out the menus and get on, get your passport and get your burgers. Also, I wanted to announce that Abby Mae's Boutique will open Saturday across from the Paramount Arts Center.
Awesome.
So that's all good, positive news I have, yay.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Spriggs. Commissioner Guth.
I just want to welcome everybody to this first meeting of, of May. Just a few announcements, this coming, a week from this Saturday is Repair Fair. And there's still a dozen or so projects available to be chosen. There's over 50 projects right now on the docket. Volunteers show up at the concession stand at 7:30 a.m. that morning next Saturday, or you can contact DJ Reimer. We've experienced a lot of bests this year. And I, it's kind of overwhelming. The best city.
Yeah.
Recognized at the SOAR Conference last week. Best water plant. We've been, we all entered, was, were at the FOP Memorial today. That was probably the best memorial that I've ever been to. At the Union. But last week, I'd say, was the best event that I've ever had in Ashland, Kentucky.
I know which one you're talking about.
And that was our National Day of Prayer at the museum. And I'll have to say, it was, I've been a part of that for 26 years. I've never missed one. I've been on the committee for the last 13 years, but probably the best National Day of Prayer.
Absolutely.
That we've ever celebrated. And we had elected officials, community leaders come together, Baptists, Methodists.
Even Catholics.
Nazarenes, Catholics. And you know, in the spirit of unity and asking God's blessing on our nation, our state, and our community. And I'll tell you what, the Lord showed up and it was good.
It was truly a joyous event.
Absolutely.
It was, yeah.
And so I.
I carried it around for days.
It was, it was really good.
It, it got me course corrected.
About time.
Yeah, this is about.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Blanton.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. We've Scott left us, so they hosted a golf tournament last week also that was, that was great. It is every year and we got, they gave us golf balls with the new logo on it. Sorry to say that the ones they gave me are no longer with us, but it is a great, great logo. So you know, it's already been talked about, but, but City of the Year, Water Plant of the Year in the state. Just standout moments, you know, when I look back over, it's hard to be, believe it's already almost four years, but those are, those are moments that stand out. But it was a little bit bittersweet because really 300-plus people should, should be standing behind us there because City of the Year happens because of our city staff.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, that's, that's all I kept thinking about on the drive home. And, and you know, a lot of people define character as what you do when, when people aren't looking. And I think about, as I learn more and more about individual jobs in the city and, and what everybody does, you know, we talk about positive things a lot up here, but every day, there are things that you all do with our citizens and help them that, that no one ever knows. And so, you know, that's, that's, that's why we're City of the Year. And so we appreciate your work so much. And last night, and thinking about water plant, the best water plant in the state, you know, that's, there's a graphic, and we talk about this a lot, hanging in tourism, of all horses pulling in the same direction. And I think we all use that analogy a lot, but it truly is, you know, that, and that happened before my time. And, and so, you know, and all through these last six, seven years, that's, that's why that happened. It was a culmination of a lot of work by a lot of people. But I was giving my kid a bath, which is always a wild time. And, but I had a moment and I was thinking about that and I just said, you know, citizens in Ashland and everywhere who receives water from our water plant, you know, when you give your kid a bath, you're giving them a bath in the best water in the state of Kentucky. And it was one of those moments where I remove myself from this position and just think of myself as a citizen. And it's like, that is a really great feeling. And so thank you all so much for that. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, on to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I want to discuss is just to give a downtown project update. The major milling was done, completed last week, was done very quickly. That got moved ahead of schedule a little bit because of the availability of the company that's doing the milling. The 17th Street Roundabout opened this morning. There were some day, there were a couple of days delay on that. It was because there was a unpredicted sinkhole and there was another leveling issue that they, that the contractor had to deal with. 18th Street Roundabout will be open in about a week. Similar, there were some other problems that they had not expected to encounter. Specifically, Columbia Gas has a large project, line replacement project going on there. So what the road ahead will look like is landscaping will begin downtown next week. The pavers will, if not simultaneously, they'll be right behind them and then finish up with the paving. We're, we're hopeful that the paving will occur in the first week of June. If, if everything lines up, it could be weather dependent. Next, next slide, please. This is just, I'm wondering why I'm posting pictures of no smoking signs. There has been, smoking was allowed in the city parks for, for many, many decades. And I think it was two to three years ago, the commission had decided that smoking, any tobacco products were not allowed in the parks. I just, I did want to highlight that to the community because it is a quality of life issue. We, we try not to, and I say we, the Parks Department tries not to do sign pollution down there with different signs. So they came up with some aesthetically nice-looking products. But it's just a reminder, you can smoke outside the parks, but not, not in the city parks. Next, please.
Wait a minute, what happens if you, if somebody's caught smoking in the park?
If I catch somebody smoking, I respectfully ask them to. If I catch somebody smoking, I respectfully ask them to go outside the boundary of the park, and 95% of the time when I do that, people say they don't, they aren't aware, and they respond.
So, there's no fine involved with smoking in the park? There's no deterrent?
I think there is.
There is?
There is, but, you know, it's not something that can be prioritized, or have the police department going around giving violations of smoking in the park.
Think it ought to stay on there.
So, city manager said we, theoretically, you could, yes.
Next, please. The Dawson Pool. So, I've got some unfortunate news to share with the community, and that is that the opening of Dawson Pool is going to be delayed. We normally open on Memorial Weekend. We were doing change, we're making adjustments to the pool. I think I mentioned in a public forum before that significant work on this pool had not been done since, I believe, 1973. We started working last fall, putting bids out to do basic construction on this, dealing with the gutter system and some of the drainage issues. State inspection came in, they did a pressure test, we failed that pressure test. They've recommended, well, they've directed that we add another line, thanks to Mr. Murray and his crew for working with the rest of the city staff. We've got water distribution down there. Instead of contracting that out, our water distribution crews are going to put that additional line in, so thanks to utilities for doing that, and everybody else on the staff also that has a hand in these type of things. Mr. Murray also coordinated, because this is such a critical thing to our community, and some of the kids that are mobily limited, and I mean, they don't have parents or other ways to get to other pools, et cetera, Mr. Murray and the Parks Department has set up for coordination that we'll have a bus, and in coordination with the City of Flatwoods and his work with the mayor, we'll have a bus that will transport kids out there on a daily basis in accordance with the schedule that's provided by the City of Flatwoods. So, we'll have this posted later on today on the city page. The Parks Department and the contractors are working diligently to get the pool open as soon as possible, and as soon as they do, you know, we'll give heads up when it will be open.
They can enjoy the brand-new playground until the pool opens.
Yeah, have a picnic.
Next slide.
That looks awful.
Just, we've already talked about the Water Treatment Plant of the Year. The reason we don't have the employees here to recognize them today is we could not get everybody here to maximize, so Bill will have to work through their schedule, so he'll either be at the next meeting or the meeting after that, Mayor and Commissioners, where we will publicly recognize them. But if you've been following this in the paper, I mean, words like SCADA, and AWAP, and DBPs, disinfectant byproducts, all the challenges that we've had down there, filtration system that went bad on us, that, quite frankly, a lot of people didn't know, we were down to two of the six filters at one point. I mean, we were by the skin of our teeth, and Bill Stambo, and all of his personnel that worked through it, Mark Hall, and the Utilities Department, again, and all the rest of the staff that enabled them to do the things they did. So, this is just unbelievably satisfying for the crews and for the city, and to say we're immensely proud is an understatement of what these personnel have done. So, we'll hit it a lot harder later, but I did just want to show those pictures too. And if you don't know, that's Bill Stambo on the, in the left picture, the gentleman's from the KWWA, and then Bill in the other picture, and Frank Worsley, who retired a year ago, but has come back on, he's a Class IV operator, and had determined that all things in retirement weren't awesome, so he has come back, and he has provided some very needed relief as we get all the rest of our operators up to Table Four certification. Next, please. And then, just as final, a couple pictures in case folks hadn't seen the great event down at the SOAR, and couldn't add anything else to what you had said about that, Mayor. And Mayor and Commissioners, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
All right. We're good, I think. We're going to move on to public participation. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed. Personal attacks, obscene, or threatening language will not be tolerated. Presentations are limited to five minutes. A yellow light indicates 30 seconds remain, a red light means the time limit has expired. Only one speaker is permitted per subject. Now, action will be taken at this meeting, those with the comments, those with comments are asked to fill out an inquiry form and leave it with the city clerk for the distribution of the proper city department. That being said, would anybody like to come forward? We know you well, my friend. If it's, if you're going to sing to Sean, save it for later.
Okay, okay. Anyway, y'all know who I am, so, anyway, on the 23rd, we'll be at Rose Hill, putting flags out. On the 24th, we'll be at the Veterans Cemetery. Right now, there's over 2,000 veterans buried. Okay, on the 25th, we'll be at Golden Oaks. I've got the county done, so, so I've been working hard getting everything done.
Thank you.
On the 27th, we have our memorial service at the Veterans Cemetery, starts at 10 o'clock. Greenup County has one, but I'm not sure the date and time. Nobody's told me anything yet, so, that's all I got.
Mike, I appreciate everything you do for, not only for our veterans, but for our military. This is National Military Month as well, so we should keep them always in our, in our thoughts and prayers, but appreciate, I really appreciate what you do for those who are no longer with us.
Always very cheering.
Would anybody else like to come forward? Another familiar face.
Yep, Mike Maynard, 1819 Eloise, Hillcrest Bruce Mission. And it's been a couple months since I've talked with y'all, and, but, it's, as we, as we end up the end of the school year, it's a good time to come and update you. And again, to thank you for the support that we've gotten from the opioid settlement, from CBDG, and then also from CBDG for some education and employment folks also. So, it's all that support that we get that, that, that makes us be able to do what we do. And so, we'll start off with, with one young man that, a little over two years ago, you may see, you may have seen him running the streets shirtless, and just struggling, struggling to survive and to make it. I ran into him at the, at the ribbon cutting at Ark. And I saw him, he was back there, he was serving. And so, he had, he was getting ready to graduate college. He walked across the stage last week with his associates.
Wow.
He's hired by the Master Chef folks, so he's got a job, graduated rehab.
Awesome.
Amazing to see somebody to come through that.
Oh, that's great.
So, him. We also got Shelby, who no doubt had a lot of challenges and obstacles coming up through life. She was, she goes to OUSC, and she was a practicum student that got to be with us here for the last year. And she just walked across the stage with her bachelor's in social work, and so I know she's done a couple interviews, I know one with Pathways here yesterday, and so, but she'll be looking to be working here, and she lives here, so. Then we had three other ones that had come through our program, that they, they earned their associate's degrees, and all three of them are continuing on with college to get their bachelor's. So, five walking across the stage this last week out of our program, so just amazing, and just so proud of them, and-
That's what it's all about, Mike.
It is, and it's hard. It's hard, harder for them than it is most, most people. And so, and that's what we try to get across to folks, that it's going to be harder, but you just have to accept that. And, and they do, and it's just amazing flourishing. So, we had another, one of our other girls, so she's been, she's been working at Pathways probably for about the last year. She came through our program, earned her Peer Support Specialist, got hired by Pathways. She works at the jail in the First Day Forward Program. Oh my gosh, that program is phenomenal. They are helping people get housing, get jobs, get into rehab, whatever it takes to get them stabilized. So, she called me this week, she needed to talk to her realtor, because she'd been approved by Frontier Housing, they're going to build her a house, and she needed to find land. And so, she called. So, she'll be our fifth homeowner out of our program. Another young lady, signed her, got her keys and signed for her house about three weeks ago, so she was our fourth one. Another guy that we had, and did not meet him initially in the best of circumstances, and just, over the last five years, it has just been challenging working with him. And, and so, things finally came to a head, he was arrested. He had to go to drug court, and he asked to be sent to inpatient. So, he's been there now about seven months, I guess, about seven months. He's going to be one of the speakers at the recovery gathering that they're doing down here, and he's been called into ministry, and he's been preaching while he's there in rehab. And so, just a complete change in him. Somebody that police familiar with, and just not helping the community at all, and just completely turned his life around. And then the last girl, and this is amazing. So, we had one girl, she came to us, she about a little over a year ago, wasn't at our, our place very long, because she qualified for Ready-to-Work Program, where they get paid to do their community service, and so she was working on her GED, so she was placed at the college, and so she's got one more test to take before she gets her GED. Well, she was downstairs in the cafeteria, she was eating with a couple of the other instructors there, and she was just talking about her dream that she would want to run a homeless shelter, because she had experienced homelessness as she was growing up, had struggled with some addiction, has made it through all that, and has got, stabilized her life, and so she's talking about that. Well, there's a couple other folks at the next table over that overheard her conversation, and they said, said, "Do you know who we are?" And she's like, "No, I have no idea." It's like, "Well, we're SOAR. We give people grants to do stuff like that." And she's like, "There's, there's just no way. You know, I've never done anything like that, I've never written anything like that, there's no way I could, I could do anything like that." They're like, "No, we can hear the passion, you need to, you need to give us a presentation. Come and give us a presentation, tell us what you want to do." And so, I guess it's been just a little over a week ago, I guess it was last Wednesday. So, she pitched to SOAR, and they said, "This is awesome." And she said, "Yeah, I'm thinking about six months to a year, maybe, you know, that this will be good," and they're like, "Nope, that's too far away. We need you to come pitch your business plan 17th of May." So, they approved her for a grant to run a homeless shelter.
Wow, that is a great idea.
So, we'll be seeing that here over the next few months developing. So, the capacity that we lost with Shelter of Hope will be coming back. And the last thing is, is that folks that are on Medicaid, having dental issues, if you've tried to find a dentist who takes Medicaid around here, there's nobody in Boyd County that does. In Greenup County, there's one, and so we mostly send people to Canova or Fort Gay, West Virginia. So, this last week, working with Aetna and a, an organization called Care Mobile out of Louisville, they do services at the jail here in Boyd County. So, they will be here 11th of July for the city to perform dental services, whatever people need. So, they're going to start coming as soon as next week to start doing pre-screening and pre-oths, and they'll be using our facilities to do those, but they can bring up to nine vans here on July 11th to do cleanings, cavities, extractions, oral surgery, and dentures for folks on Medicaid here.
So, that's for, for folks on Medicaid?
Yep, folks on Medicaid.
Because I've had, I had someone who, who I met with literally just about that issue, not being able to find dentist-
It's good insurance, but nobody takes it.
Right.
And so, this, and this will be a regular thing that they're going to come back and do.
Wonderful.
So, between us and Aetna and Care Mobile. So, we'll have dental services, just a little different model of how we deliver them, but people will be able to get help.
Great job, Mike.
What a great report.
Mike, once again, you just are shining a light on the good things that are happening, and how people can turn their lives around, and also finding those gaps of care, and trying to meet the needs where those gaps are. That's why we put our faith in you and your mission, because we know you do great work and continue to do great work, so we're, we're appreciative. Thank you so much. Anybody else like to come forward at this time?
Hello, my name is Mark Boykin, and I hate to be the depressing follow-up, but we've got a lot to talk about, so I'll try to keep it brief. Two weeks ago, Bill Reeves asked, "What was the commission's plan for the replacement of the repealed rental registry?" I, too, want to know. Landlords want to know, tenants want to know, people want to know. You effectively repealed the rental registry with no discussion, but this will get rid of the ordinance, correct? And Commissioner Clark isn't here, but she should know that, you know, three years of no deadlines before that would indicate that this is not the correct framing of this issue. So, what changed? The city set an ambitious goal of making all the landlords sign up, not within a year, not within six months, but two or three months, depending on when they got their water bill with the voluntary registration flyers in it. The issue you guys faced was, did those flyers constitute notice as outlined under the penalty subsection of the ordinance? And so, landlords were scared that they'd be paying a fee of $100 per unit per day that they didn't register, scared enough that some of them chose to register for the first time in years. And code enforcement didn't have the money they needed to do the job of processing all those registrations and building the database, because you guys didn't apportion that money for three years. Same page? Good. The funding for the rental registry was for code enforcement to get one new inspector, a new truck, some software upgrades, and office equipment, right? It would not make or break the city's general fund, which would have, it would have no effect on the city's utilities fund, and the department is understaffed and underfunded to begin with. That expenditure will be necessary eventually, if the growth agenda that you guys have, you guys want to see growth in Ashland, right? If that is to succeed in any way, we're not going to need fewer inspectors for fewer properties in the immediate or long-term future. The story of the rental registry, though, it might as well be the story of the Chronic Nuisance Ordinance, or the Rental Inspections Ordinance that was never implemented, or the failed pushes to adopt standardized, clear landlord-tenant law. It is a story of bad faith, misunderstandings, defining a potential solution to nobody's fault, right? And powerful people who cannot or won't separate truth from fiction publicly, it's very important to do. From your perspective, the enforcement mechanism that you actually need is for landlords to, need to register with the city to evict a tenant. You could tie that mechanism to a specific point in the forcible detainer process, and the rental registry would not immediately affect any landlords with long-term happy tenants out there. Prioritize situations where whether someone's going to have a home or not is the question. So, the landlords would be relying on the state to enforce their will, and that's a two-way street, so it seems like a pretty reasonable solution. And that's just one idea, right? An uncharitable reading, uncharacteristic of me, would be that this Board of Commissioners' plan for the city is to pick and choose which rules to follow, to let homes become dilapidated, to keep taxes and the cost of living low, and to delay, delay, delay any attempt at change. I don't think that's quite right, but some people do, because you guys often find yourselves arguing against change. Your typical arguments are essentially that, because change is fiscally unsustainable, the city cannot fund new services. As a result, you instead support and subsidize public-private partnerships to fill the growing gap between what the city provides and what the citizens need. Now, the first of those seems like a reasonable concern, right? Fiscal concerns, reasonable concerns, but ultimately, it prevented the enforcement of your rental registry, which made it a problem for you guys, right? The second is a useful state of affairs. We all appreciate the work that Mike Maynard does, he's an excellent individual, we appreciate the work that all of these organizations do. But you have to note that companies and community organizations lack the authority to compel all landlords to register within the city. There are some things that they just can't do. This is half of why the Kentucky Fair Housing Council doesn't have an Ashland office, and our community and tenants are worse off for their absence, because they would advocate on behalf of tenants, right? The other half of the reason why Kentucky Fair Housing Council isn't in Ashland is because, for a tenant, winning a dispute against a landlord is very difficult under common law, because the status, the status quo is unduly biased towards property rights. Excuse me. The malnourished state of code enforcement is one issue, but people understand that something is wrong with code enforcement, because they see homes that have stood since the 1940s being condemned and demolished. Our common law system of landlord-tenant law, in which Tennessee is defined as essentially going to be like a subservient component of property rights, right? It ironically allows our community's homes to rot from the inside, as it is in neither the landlord nor the tenant's interest to prioritize maintaining and improving the quality of the housing, while the city generally ensures code compliance of what can be seen from the street, just because it's harder to get into a home, of course, when property rights are king. That's why there are violations for the lawns, the cars that haven't moved in a decade, and decks, but those aren't the biggest issues. KPU and housing law experts have identified the Uniform Residential Landlord-Tenant Act as a potential solution. You're also a state statute that 32 cities and five counties in Kentucky, including Lexington and Louisville, Fayette and whatnot, have adopted. Changing the dynamic of landlord-tenant relations to incentivize both parties to preserve the property in a livable state and improve the property, that would be a solution that costs the city nothing besides minor administrative costs required to familiarize staff, police and city staff with the new law. In the rental market of Ashland, depending on your lease, a landlord can effectively steal your safety deposit, give no notice before entering your home, refuse to repair infrastructure like piping, wiring, your roof, or even your floor, evict you for reporting gross violations of the housing code, talking to your neighbors about your living conditions, or for withholding your rent until they make your home actually habitable. We've heard these- habitable. We've heard these concerns and more in our conversations with tenants and property owners. So tell me, which tenants in Ashland deserve protections against these issues and which do not? Everybody understands that's a distinction that we do not want, right? What would you think of a city that says, "You only get your security deposit back from some landlords"? I'm closing in here, sorry, on the end. Would you think of such a place, a home is like, a good home, like an excellent place to live? No, you wouldn't care as much, or you would care a little bit less, right, if that was the status quo?
Sir, I appreciate your time. I've given you the exact same amount of extended time that I gave Mr. Maynard.
Okay.
And your time has expired.
I see.
Okay, we thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward at this time?
Due for this, and I'm not for sure if this is the right timing for this, Mr. Maynard.
It is not.
Okay, okay. I didn't know. I apologize.
Okay. All right. Anybody else like to come forward at this time? Okay, moving on to old business.
Old business, item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, repealing ordinance number 56, series of 2024, which authorized the service agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Silversmith Inc., DBA Silversmith Data.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the fiscal year 2024 grant application to the Federal Transit Administration on behalf of the Ashland Bus System for operating costs prevented by maintenance, paratransit service, maintenance, payroll, and capital expenditures, and further authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for the implementation of the grant.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an opioid litigation funding agreement amendment between the City of Ashland and Ramey E. Step Homes, Inc., regarding the use of national prescription opioid litigation funds.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and CDB, Inc., for the City Hall exterior upgrades, 17th Street entrance upgrade project in the amount of $106,998 for the Department of Engineering.
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a letter of agreement between the City of Ashland and FiveCo Area Development District setting forth the duties of FiveCo AD as a project administrator for the sewer treatment plant enlargement project pursuant to ordinance number 64 or 61, series of 2024.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending section two of ordinance number 68, series of 2023, which is commonly known or referred to as the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget ordinance of the City of Ashland.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Item G, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, and this was tabled previously, an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a conditional commitment letter for a Kentucky Infrastructure Authority loan for the Ashland Lead Service Line Inventory Assessment Project in an amount not to exceed $874,130 for the Department of Engineering, and upon meeting certain conditions, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ashland any and all documents associated with the loan.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. We have a resolution, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of May 9, 2024.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business, item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and CDB, Inc., for the Ashland Senior Center Storefront Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $149,673 for the Department of Community and Economic Development to be paid from Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a construction contract between the City of Ashland and Lady Contracting LLC for the Ashland Water Treatment Plant Ramp Widening Project in the amount of $80,654 for the Department of Engineering.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Peoples Insurance Agency LLC to provide property and casualty insurance broker agent placement services from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025 in the amount of $14,000 in authorizing payment of the same.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a trust participation agreement for the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services General Insurance Trust for fiscal year 2024, 25, and payment of property and casualty premiums in the amount of $788,428.29.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a letter agreement between the City of Ashland and FiveCo Area Development District setting forth the duties of FiveCo AD as a project administrator for the Lead Service Line Inventory Assessment Project pursuant to ordinance number 74 of 2024.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion, counsel?
We've entertained a motion through, going to executive session to discuss an individual personnel matter.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, folks, we appreciate your time. We're going to-
Can I say one more thing? The email or the address to look at the burger menu is AKYburger.com.
There we go.
Not B-A-K. You don't want to miss out on looking at the burgers.
Okay. Well, thank you all for attending. And again, we're going to go into executive session. Not sure when we'll be out, but only the items discussed and the motion will be discussed. No action will be taken.
Record reflect, we return from executive session. Only the one item was discussed. No action was taken. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the city manager on grievance 041024.
Okay, we have that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all. We appreciate it. We are adjourned.[1764.82][1764.82](applause)[1765.82]